I do appreciate, however, that that is the point of view because I did start off with that very simple statement and looked at it and said, "If I was a voter, how would I feel? Was that bias me or not?" I think it does. It could arguably bias one to say, "Oh, you're trying to keep the library from going in the park because now you've made it so vague and so amorphous that it could go anywhere, right in the middle of my beloved soccer park." And so that's why I tried to show a voter that it would be limited in two ways: money and location.
So my last question is, well, how are you going to deal with this in your legal opinion?
Well, what I would say in the city attorney's neutral analysis, it would say, if approved, this will allow a building to replace an existing structure, an existing building in the park on existing hardscape and not taking away any of the park amenities that are open space in nature, meaning the fields, the tennis courts, the active or inactive recreational aspects. The buildings, interestingly enough, you know, starting with the will, interestingly, at the time when this Mrs. Palmer deeded it to the city, it recognized there was a house there and it said, you know, "The husband gets to live in a house." And these other structures, a lot of them were there, and it says, "No house shall be built in the park." So it does have certain limitations. And it was my intent that if the council really wanted to, you know, for instance, and I'm not suggesting this and it's not looked at in the EIR, but if the council wanted to demolish what's been called the city manager's house and put in a library at that location, it would be legal to do so under the will and under the provisions. I just, actually, was trying to give as much flexibility to the future city councils as possible while limiting it to non-essential park purposes. But I can't say that there was any huge thought about all the various potential locations in there that weren't looked at in the EIR.
Jerry, anything else? Jim?
Okay. You know, like most of the other council members, you know, I've had hundreds of emails since the subject that library came up. I'm sure that many of these council members have as well. And a core issue for many of the people who have sent those emails is, who is going to pay for it? And how are we going to protect the open space? So I think that these are things that people have been very concerned about, especially that we do not take up any of the open space. And where's all the money coming from? So I think the wording that our town attorney has used addresses two of these issues, which I think are big issues for most of the people who would be voting on this. I don't know if it's possible to do this, but if we said replacing the main house in this, I wouldn't have any objections that I either have wanted to add there. So those are my comments.
Elizabeth?
So, city attorney, was there a reason that you did not include in your ballot language, not using any existing park open space, however, cutting down several heritage trees in the process? Because that is something that it would require also.
Well, there's a good example of where I start to get skittish about putting in language because it's not really required to cut down any heritage trees because we don't have a size for the library determined yet. And if the library were 5,000 square feet or 6,000 square feet, it might be actually quite easy to get around those trees. And so, I mean, you could theoretically, if you had, if you were trying to make a point of view to the public, I could have put in there without cutting down any heritage trees, not touching the tennis court, without messing up any of the paths or whatever. But from my perspective, I think that the core issues, and I did not plant Mr. Dobby, the core issues that I've heard mentioned by the public when they came and protested, you know, "Why put it in the park?" And some of the core issues, there's, look, there's been rampant confusion from day one about this project, wherever it goes, about how it's being paid for. Being paid for by taxpayers' money, but sitting in a fund waiting to pay for library purposes, nothing else. And so I thought it was appropriate to say so. Secondly, putting it in the park, if it would take away open space, I think that the environmental consultants would have some issues with that because there's very limited open space park land in the town of Atherton. And so in looking at it, Elizabeth, I drew a line at a point in time where I got to a point where I didn't mention the size. I know that, you know, Jerry has many times brought up the issue of size, you know, that's being driven by outside factors. I thought about talking about size, but then I didn't realize, you know, I'm not the person that's supposed to pick how big the library will be. That's the city council's job. And where it will be physically cited is also the city's council's job. The question is, should it be in the park at all as a library that would cost money?
That is the essential question.
Yeah.
Shouldn't it be in the park at all? That is the essential, simple question that needs to be answered by the residents, by the voters. Should the library be moved to the park? Yes or no? So I think that you really did try to look at it in all sorts of ways and you kind of expanded. I think your first impression was the best, was the right impression, and you should have gone with it. And you should have gone with the simple impression. I have to tell you, if that first impression were you stopped before, at the end of park of the period, then we would be having a very different discussion right now.
Yeah, actually, I agree with you. And the discussion, in my opinion, from having written about 20 of these, would be that the rest of the people that aren't here tonight would be here to tell me they didn't like the fact that my statement was biased because I didn't tell people it wouldn't be plopped down in the middle of the soccer field or someplace else, that I implied it would be taken away.
That would be in the argument. That would be in your...
No, that...
Yes, because it would...
Elizabeth, you can't put it in the argument unless it's in the proposal. And that's the Huntington Beach, California Supreme Court decision. Ballot arguments that are false, misleading, or erroneous should be stricken. And that's the problem. Because the ballot measure then would be absolutely open to anybody's interpretation. So one argument would be, it's going to be at an existing facility that's stored there. And somebody else would say, "No, it's not. It could easily be then, right in the middle of a soccer field or any other green area of the park. It could be anywhere in the park." And that's, that's the problem with just leaving it vague. And by the way, I understand both arguments. And the reason I left, keep it simple, because I felt like voters have a right to a certain baseline of information. Not size, not color, but they need to know the basic facts about what they're being asked to vote on.
Anything else? Kathy, anything?
I agreed to stay out of this, so I'm going to stay out of it. The only exception being that with respect to the people who write letters, I will add that Mr. Cennelli, and I don't know about some of these other letters because I didn't receive them all. You failed to add that he wanted greater detail. The part that you didn't read said that he wanted more specificity.
If I had had more time, I would have read every word of it.
Okay. He wanted greater specificity, not less. And there were letters that I did receive that wanted the language exactly the way it was. So, that's it.
Well, I'm going to make a motion here to pick things off that we make a simple, simple motion, strip away qualifiers. And the ballot media here just addressed the issue, should the town, Newtown Library be constructed in Holbrook Palmer Park?
I'll second that.
Can we finish the council discussions? I didn't get a chance to speak. Is that okay? Or I'll ask the city manager if we need to vote on the motion or something.
Oh, go ahead. No discussion?
Okay. So I tend to agree with the resident that said, you know, Anne, said that most people don't, don't read the prospectus, that yes, you're going to read the ballot measure when they go in there and close the curtains and they're going to read it. And I do think that a question I would always have, being suspicious of government, is how much is this going to cost me? Or when is the other shoe going to drop? And as Mr. Dobby said, majority of the comments that I've received from residents has been, "We don't have enough green space. Don't take any of it up." And so I think that, that there are two key issues. Now, I think that, you know, Jerry, you were right on with saying, if we're going to amend it, perhaps another adjective or two, saying that we're going to take down the house if it goes to that location. Or put in the size limiter, both probably, maybe, for me, would be okay. And I thought that we were almost there with regards to having an agreement on that. But that's my opinion on that. So I think that, I think that the ballot measure as is could stand to even have a word or two more. But I, but I don't think it should have a word or two less. That's my view of sense. So we can now take, the motion is on the floor. That we shorten, take the agitator, unless there's any other public comments or council comments.
Through the chair. In either resolution, you need to decide whether you want to include rebuttal arguments or not. If you don't want to include them, that needs to be stricken from the resolution.
Okay, but that's going to be...
That's the second segment.
We said we would talk that next. But we may, for brevity.
Well, they're...
Let's, let's go ahead.
No, we're just dealing with the balance.
We're doing the ballot measure on this one, and then we'll talk about those other items. And then as we go to the other ones, we may want to do them together. Okay, let's move forward. We have the motion on the floor from Jerry, seconded by Elizabeth, that said that we actually should shorten it and just say something along the lines of, do you want to...
Do you want to re-read it?
Well, that the town of Atherton's new library be constructed, would be constructed in Holbrook Palmer Park. Yes or no?
Mr. Mayor, could I suggest, perhaps, should the town of Atherton construct a new library in Holbrook Palmer Park?
That, that is fine.
The word "should" wasn't there, and that's the way it's supposed to be framed.
Motion maker is satisfied with the question.
So all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
No?
Opposed.
So is there another motion on the floor with regards to the ballot measure?
I'll make a motion that we approve the wording of the ballot measure as proposed by our city attorney.
I'll second that.
Mr. Mayor, with clarification that it, the term "open space" is required, is referencing, we can change this slightly, but reference taking down existing structure?
I think that that would be very appropriate because that seems to have been something that was somewhat of a controversy as well.
Is that something we want to make or the motion?
How would, do we read it?
Well, essentially, it would say, "Should the town of Atherton construct a new library in Holbrook Palmer Park, using funds dedicated for library purposes only and not using any existing park open space, referring to taking down an existing house or where's that effect?"
What, what works to that?
Substitution for an existing structure.
Yeah. Substitution for an existing structure. Again, I didn't write this in 30 seconds, and I don't think I should have edited it in 30 seconds.
I know, but we want to, we want to vote on absolute language if you're actually going to edit it, unless we have to come back to review.
Well, if you give me two minutes, I can probably do that.
I think we should vote on it tonight. So you can just change your...
Do you want to go ahead and discuss the ballot?
Yeah, is it okay if we discuss the ballot? Discussion, the ballot...
Sure.
Okay.
So, city council has the right to offer the pro and con arguments. You can give up that right, or you can decide to offer both of them, or designate certain council members to write the pros and certain council members to write the cons. If you give up that right and move on to like a priority type order, and it's a combination of bona fide association of citizens or individual voters. Ultimately, if we receive more than one argument, for pros or cons, the elections official will decide which argument actually goes into the ballot.
Well, if there's a committee, does the committee, do they have the pecking order after the council?
A committee...
Like the town sanction committee, like the library committee, or when we get to another place, the Newtown Center Committee?
Yes.
So there would be the secondary?
Yes.
Well, it's, the city council is first.
Right.
Then any member or members of the city council is second. And then it goes on to committees and commissions, things like that. Because, you know, it's not uncommon, you know, for instance, there seems to be a 3-2 divergence here on this issue. Three people can write an argument for, two against. That's not the city council. It's three individuals who happen to be council members that have priority. And then they can be joined by up to two more people or three more people to get to five. You have five signatories.
Okay. So does the council wish to write together? Want we discuss whether or not we as a council want to write together a pro or a con?
Probably not. I, I think we should let others, other than the council, write the pro or the con. I, I feel that the normal, you know, council assembly invited in this. I would like to see a couple of citizens that we can select write the pros and the cons, if we can find some, plenty of people that would be happy to write the cons, I think. So I don't think the council should be involved in writing any of those.
Mr. Mayor, let me explain this because it's going to get complicated. The city council as a group can vote to issue an argument on one side or the other, but not both. That doesn't appear to be something that's going to happen. So after that, individual council members can say, "I would like to be the author of one side or the other." That doesn't have to happen tonight, by the way. And then, as it goes down the hierarchy, it's the elections official, the city clerk, determines which of the arguments is selected. You know, for instance, if the library steering committee, three members of the city council, and eight other people in the community submit requests to write the argument, well then the council members have a priority leaving two open spots. They could allow two other people, assuming it was three, they could, they could allow two other people from the steering committee. They would have first deals to come in and make a comment. And if they didn't want to, then they could go back out to anybody in the public who then participates. But there's one argument that will be written. And the city, by the way, the three council members can say, "No, it's just the three of us. That's what we're going to do." But it's the elections official that makes the determination, not the city council.
Well, we don't have to decide today, since there's not, the only thing we can decide today is whether or not the whole council wants to write it. Because other people may want to consider writing it themselves.
If the city council doesn't want to do it as a group, then there's a 14-day period for people that want to, to submit to the city clerk their desire to be that author.
I certainly don't want to do it.
And I, I'm neutral on it. I do not want to do an argument for or against. I just want the residents to have a opportunity to vote on whether or not it goes to the park.
So what is the submission process from the residents?
There's actually a form from the county that they have to use, and then they have to sign that their address on it.
Do you add those forms now?
I do. Well, not on me, no.
So if three or four residents came to you separately and requested a form, you give each one of them a form?
Yes.
And then, and when they turn them back in, the elections official picks the one that is, in her opinion, the most representative of the, of the essential argument, unless they bind together themselves and say, "Well, you know, the five of us will write one," something like that.
And in accordance to the, to the pecking order?
And there's a hierarchy established by the elections code.
So I'll ask a question to the city clerk, and with procedure, since this was all bundled as one topic, even though we broke it up for discussion, we need to take public comments again on who's going to write?
No.
Okay, so we want to take public comments.
And Mr. Mayor, if you would like, I do have some suggestive language that might fit the bill.
Well, why don't we make a vote on, on the, the council to, so we can put this one to bed, and then we'll listen to your language.
I heard people down at that end say they didn't want to do it. When they got to a majority, there's no need for a vote.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so then there's no, okay, no need for a vote. Okay.
Unless you want to put something on. Mr. Mayor, my quick revision to the existing language, "Should the town of Atherton construct a new library in Holbrook Palmer Park, using funds dedicated for library purposes only and not using any existing park open space in the general, specifically..." Wait, now, now it goes backwards.
Yeah, okay. So we can move on. You can get it, get it right.
Okay, it's going to have to say "using only," not, not using. "Using only non-open space in the general location of the existing main house."
That doesn't make sense.
That makes sense.
It doesn't.
Well, let me, let me, well, let me clarify what it says. It would say, "Should they construct a new library in the park, using funds for library purposes, and using only non-open space in the general location of the existing main house?" I think that's pretty specific as to where it could be.
How about replacing the, how about replacing, as opposed to general?
Non-open space replacing...
How about demolishing the main house?
Well, replacing means demolished. It can't be replaced.
No, I think replacing is clear, using non-open space property, replacing the general, the general, replacing...
The main house.
Well, it has to be generally because it's the main house and hardscape.
After Holbrook Palmer Park, if you just say, "After Holbrook Palmer Park, replacing the main house," and then continue using funds. That's the simplest way to do it.
Well, it is very simple, but the main house, you've heard tonight, some people say, "Well, that's got 3,000 square foot footprint." And what the council has previously said was 10,000 square foot because it included hardscape around it.
But your legal opinion can take care of that.
I can only make a legal opinion if it's, because right now legally, if somebody said replacing, and without any other descriptive words, replacing the house, that would mean the house, not the hardscape.
But you have council resolutions in the past that you, that you can cite from.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do now, is, is to incorporate that.
You could just say, "Replacing the main house and hardscape."
I can say that, because that's what they...
The hardscape is open space.
The main space, the main house, and surrounding hardscape. That takes care of it. And just put that, "After Holbrook Palmer Park," and that's...
Well, until I started serving on this council, I didn't really understand what everybody meant by hardscape, probably, you know, in the idiot category.
Yeah. I think it'd be easy to say, "Dedicated for library purposes only and using only..."
And the patio, and the surrounding patio.
"...non-park space by replacing generally the existing main house and surrounding..."
No, no, no. It's all park space. Even the patio of the main house is park space.
I'm trying to accept out from, somebody made the comment, probably somewhat correctly to Elizabeth.
It's outdoor space. It's, it's open space.
Somebody made the comment tonight, somewhat correctly, at least arguably correctly, that everything in the park, every structure, including the houses and everything, is, quote, "parked." It's not traditional park use, but I get it. And so what I'm trying to do is accept out of the whole park, the one location where this would, if, if the voters allowed it, it would go. Otherwise, it doesn't go anywhere.
I just think, if you say, "Replacing the main house," that covers it.
I think you have to say, "Replacing the main house and surrounding concrete and hardscape."
Well, well, if, if I could kind of throw a spanner in the works, we've got three potential places or three potential solutions for the park. Two of them are in one location with different sizes, and the other one is, is in the North Meadow. And so one does use, so the vote, the way you're wording it would preclude it going to the North Meadow, which is one of our EIR group locations.
It precludes going everywhere except the one location.
Except for the, except for the one location that, that was approved back at the previous meeting.
If you put it anywhere else, you are picking up open space.
Okay. Well, I know, but I'm just pointing out that...
It's really the council's prerogative. I'm kind of trying to wordsmith here, language that is not necessarily trying to bias, should, you know, the over, the, the core questions are, "Should the library go in the park?" and, and who's going to pay for it, and that sort of thing. But I think you could say, you could say, "Replace," you know, "Should it, should it go in the park, replacing the existing main house and surrounding infrastructure or hardscape," or whatever term is most understandable to the public.
It's actually surrounding, open space.
Um, well, there's, you can argue that...
I would say, "Hardscape" is a very well accepted word. So I would say, if you just said, "Replacing the main house and surrounding hardscape," that covers it in my mind. Patio was even better. It's more...
Yeah, or some surrounding concrete. That's more than concrete.
Surrounding concrete. That's...
The patio and the walkways. It's more than concrete, though.
It'd be nice if you had the large screen display. We could type it.
The patio, there's flowers, there's trees. It's not going to remove that.
Yeah, inside the house. Inside the house is flowers.
Mm-hmm.
Six, six trees or something.
Well, I, I think that we can say, "Replacing the main house and some surrounding patios and walkways."
That's it.
And that gives, gives the general notion an idea, short of putting a square footage maximum on it, which...
I think that's about as clear.
That's fine. I think that's okay. That sounds good. That sounds fine. So why don't you read it?
Holfing?
Holfing.
It's their time.
We want to make sure we have it consistently read.
"Should the town of Atherton construct a new library in Holbrook Palmer Park, using funds dedicated for library purposes only and using..."
And by replacing the place.
Oh, and, and repl, and by, by...
No "and," but...
By, yeah, no "and." "By replacing the main house and some surrounding patios and walkways."
That sounds good. It's, I'd make a motion that we accept that word.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. I cannot in good conscience agree to that ballot language because I think it's confusing, it's hard simple, and it does not represent the spirit in which we were trying to get the vote to the Atherton residents.
I, I concur, but I voted for, just to get something going here.
I understand.
All right. Item number three is...
Through the chair.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Did you want to have a quick discussion on whether or not you want to allow rebuttal arguments?
Certainly.
If you don't, if you don't, by resolution, adopt a resolution that allows rebuttal arguments, there are none.
Well, I think that the reason we're having to vote is because the town seems to be divided. And my personal opinion, wanting to hear from everybody else, is that, that it would be inappropriate to not allow a con as well as a pro. I mean, you know, I don't know whether people are going to shove it up the...
The rebuttal is more...
No, no. No, what happens is, you have a pro, a con, and then a rebuttal after that.
Oh, no. I don't think we should do that.
I do.
Yeah, I, I think so, too.
Yes.
Okay, fine. Sounds like you got three, three yeses on the rebuttal.
Maybe, maybe we have four.
Billy?
We're in the district.
Yeah, but no, I don't...
Let's move on.
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking about transparency, let everybody say what they want to say.
So, Mr. Mayor, the, the vote before was to adopt the resolution as revised, including, including allowing the rebuttal.
Right. Okay, number three.
What's promoted?
Excuse me?
No, they already voted.
Okay, number one. Number, number three, well, when, when council members speak up and kind of cast their vote, then we do count them. Okay, so moving on. This is the ballot measure for the Little League. Staff, report.
Do you have my written report?
Council comments. Would anybody like to discuss the ballot measure on the Little League? Anyone like to start the ball rolling, so to speak?
I will. First of all, what are these, each of these ballot measures going to cost?
The cost is not significant. It's about 20 percent more than what we would have paid for this election because we already have an election with two seats to fill.
Okay.
So it's just printing.
So that'll be approximately how many thousand dollars then?
Probably about $5,000. It's printing and translation.
For each?
Total.
Total, okay, thank you. There, there are certainly issues related to what Little League is proposing. The, the, I'm, I'm just not quite sure, um, what it is they proposed. I saw a, a proposal maybe a year ago, year and a half ago, and, and I understand a, a proposal is due to the planning commission, they have not yet seen it, uh, is my understanding. Uh, I know there've been a lot of discussions, uh, with Mr. Hillman and others about the concerns that residents have about some aspect of the project. And so, um, in turn, you know, I've heard, heard people mention 200-seat bleachers. Uh, I'm not, I don't recall ever hearing that number before, uh, so I'm, I'm unsure as to what's being proposed or what will be proposed in terms of the, the bleacher, uh, situation. If, uh, since there's also a, a, in the works, a park or a master plan for the usage of the park, that park and rec is going to be taken up. And the fact that the planning commission has not yet, uh, taken this matter up. And the fact council, of course, has not yet, uh, seen any kind of proposal. It seems to me to be premature to be voting, asking to vote on something that we, we don't even know what it is yet. So that, 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 that's my, my, my dilemma here about going ahead with it. I, I agree with Jerry. I think this, I mean, I don't know what it is for them. I, I, like Jerry, I saw a proposal about a year ago, whether that's still the same or not, I really don't know. And not only that, but the language here talks about erecting, containing spectator bleachers. I mean, I've heard lots of people have told me different things. It's not just going to be bleachers, it's going to be all kinds of other things, permanent fences and everything else. So I really don't know what this is. So if, if, if we wanted to postpone this as far as I'm concerned, I'd be willing to.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I sort of throw some facts on the table?
Yeah.
It was presented to the planning commission at the last meeting. I was there and the confusion at the plan, at the planning commission was about as confusing as tonight. This wasn't, this did not come from staff as what we thought would be a good idea to discuss at this point in time for the reasons you're already raising tonight. The stab in the dark that I took in drafting something was based on the latest proposal, but notice it doesn't have anything about numbers or anything else. It has to do with a permanent structure. Um, that's as much as we could come up with and we share your concerns that this is awfully premature.
It was raised, I'll just tell you, it was raised at the planning commission and I can give you, without giving you any feeling one way or the other about how I feel. It said it was going to be an eight and a half foot high covered dugouts, on deck circle, which would be protected, and extend fence out so that there would be a warm-up area. A seating area behind the dugout would also be protected and tiered. New restrooms around the backside of the, of the seating area. Um, the exterior siding would be painted. They would install foul poles, electronic scoreboard along the train tracks. There would be water fountains. Um, there would be some discussion to allow other sports to use some of the storage space. The foul poles would not be removable. The outfield fence would be removable at the end of the season. It would be thin nylon and would weigh about 130 pounds. Um, it takes about an hour to an hour and a half to break down and put up, but they will remove each week for mowing. The foul poles would be about 20 feet high. Four trees would be removed behind the backstop. The, um, the bleachers would be covered. They would accommodate up to 200 spectators. Normally, uh, 70 people up to about 120 people for AAA. Where would they pull the plumbing from? They said from Watkins or from other bathrooms. They recognize that would be one of the big costs. Uh, no increase in the number of people would be expected because of the improvements. And then someone said, but, you know, wouldn't you really expect to have more people because of covered bleachers? And they said, yes, maybe 5% because people who are in wheelchairs and grandparents with walkers who are not presently able to attend the games would probably want to come. Because of the mound, it would be for baseball only. The electronic scoreboard would be about six feet by four feet. Um, lighting, there would be none except in the seating area. No sound system, that's an absolute. No night activity. Um, the game activity would remain the same. No snack shed. Uh, the maintenance of the restrooms in the fields would be through an endowment, but perhaps would not be year-round through them. The stand maintenance, uh.
You, you've made your point.
And that was not had upon by the planning commission because they had.
Yeah, I think there's so many issues here, there are potential issues here. I, I, I agree with Jim, I think this is premature.
I do too. Well, um, at the, at the November meeting, there was a lot of people for and against. There were a lot of little kids in, in their baseball uniforms, et cetera. Um, you've heard some people who couldn't stay for the meeting to discuss it. I got letters on it, as I'm sure maybe some of them will be read today. Um, if we're having the, the vote, this is something that's very similar to some of the comments we're getting from the library. Uh, is that, we don't want to lose any permanent, uh, park space. Uh, it would make it more or less exclusive. When we first built the, the Little League, it was going to have removable backstop, removable fences. And after several years, they stopped being removable, they're still up now. Um, so, so they're not removable. And so we may say we're going to be removing things, but over time, you know, people stopped doing that.
What the ballot measure has to do with it.